So we're going to go ahead and start with our study session this evening. And we're going to be talking about COVID-19 and virtual instruction discussion. Starting us off this evening is Dr. Craig Gilbert. And then we will also hear from Mr. Frank Narducci and Mr. Larry Rothen.
I'm going to start.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Castile is going to start.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Recent, the recent increases in COVID cases has reignited the debate about schools. Do we stay open for in-person? Do we close or transition to virtual, hybrid, online, all of the above? We've received hundreds of emails and comments, and I know the board has. And I can assure the community, we have received and read all your emails, even shared them with one another. Some are supporting and some are criticizing. So we get it all. And I assure you that the, those of you that write the board on comments for this evening are all shared and they're for the board to read. The volume has precluded many of us from responding to all of them, but I just want to assure the community, we are reading them and taking note. Tonight, the administration wants to present our plan moving forward as the COVID cases increase in the county. First of all, we want to assure the staff, parents, and community that we are closely watching the national, state, county, zip code, and district data, all the benchmarks. In addition, we are tracking our site-specific data because we believe that is a critical piece of the information. We're continuing to revisit and reinforce our mitigation strategies as the pandemic fatigue sets in. And we know that fatigue has set in when it comes to wearing masks and staying distanced. And I just don't think we're all diligent like we were several weeks ago. So I certainly want to encourage the community and the staff to recommit to those strategies, those mitigation strategies. We will be meeting with State and Health Department officials on Friday in a meeting. And we're going to be exploring onsite testing solutions for staff and students. And it would be that 15-minute test similar to ASU. We might have the opportunity to be part of a pilot here in the district. And we're looking forward to that information, and we'll look forward to updating you. This evening, Dr. Gilbert, Mr. Narducci, and Mr. Rothen will present our plan and the rationale behind it. At the end of the study session, we aren't kidding ourselves. We know that there will be a number of you upset, maybe angry, continued frustration. Some of you will be relieved and happy and pleased. I'm hoping that you will all feel informed and realize that we are not taking this pandemic lightly, but trying to make decisions by including district and site-specific data so we know how it is directly impacting our very specific local community. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. Dr. Gilbert will start us off.
Madam President, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to share this information with you. With the district's intent to focus on a localized approach to addressing COVID-19 spread in the CUSD community, this presentation will review benchmarks and learning scenarios, review Maricopa County data, provide perspective of district zip code area data, review successful mitigation strategies, review our CUSD COVID-19 data, discuss in-person learning, and then provide CUSD plan to determine when to move a site or sites to temporary virtual learning. What I'd like to do is first, I start by reviewing the benchmarks and learning scenarios. We've had discussions previously. So just as a review, when we look at the community spread benchmarks, going from minimal risk to substantial risk, you will see that the focus in the benchmarks is cases, percent positivity, COVID-like illness. When you look at the minimal risk, it's below 10 cases per 100,000, below 5% for percent positivity, below 5% for COVID-like illness. When we look at moderate, it's 10 to 100 cases per 100,000, between 5 and 10% for positive, between 5 and 10% for COVID-like illness. And then for substantial, it's above 100 cases per 100,000. Percent positivity is above 10%, and COVID-like illness above 10%. So we looked at definitions just as a follow-up. Our case rate, this is the number of people infected with COVID-19 per 100,000 people in a selected area. Percent positivity, this is the percentage of PCR diagnostic tests confirmed positive out of all tests performed in the selected area, being the PCR test is the, I believe it's the no swab. COVID-like illness percentage of hospital visits, this information comes from the surveillance system that monitors the percent of people who visit emergency rooms and hospitals with symptoms of COVID-19. So what you see before you now is looking at the learning scenarios for the county benchmarks. You will see that this is the area or the document that was changed in the county that I think is important to note. You will see that in the red area, which is the substantial area, which is high, in order to move to virtual learning in the new documentation from the county, is all three benchmarks are in red before you move to virtual and onsite. This is different from what it was previous. And previous was the focus is moving to, moving from being in virtual, moving to in-person. And so to move to in-person, it was if you had one red in an area, you couldn't move up to the next. If you had one yellow in an area, you couldn't move up to the next, to the green. I think it's real important because the main focus at that time and all the documentation that had came out was, how do you move from virtual to in-person? The new data, the new focus and the new directives, the new guidelines really focuses now on, we are in the area of being in-person. Now, how do you move, if you move, to a virtual model or a hybrid model? So this was the area that was changed. You'll see you have recommendation for resuming in-person learning. This is where we currently are. We're in in-person learning, this in-person learning. This is what we've talked about many times as to what needs to occur if you're moving from virtual to in-person learning over a two-week period is really what the focus is of when you're going to change from something, you're looking at something occurring over a two-week period. So I'm not going to continue to cover this, but this is information that we've shared. I wanted to make sure that you had this so that you can refer back to it when you're looking at, what does that mean for going to in-person learning? I think this slide here is the important piece when you look at what has changed. When you look at the recommendations for considering returning to virtual learning, this is new. This was not in the documentation in the initial plans because it hadn't come out from the county as to what it looks like when you're going from virtual or from in-person to virtual. We had started in virtual and moved on. So important to look at in this slide is going into the bullets in this area. What you see is if school district or other defined school area has one or more benchmarks in the substantial category, for two or more weeks, schools should consult with the Maricopa County Department of Public Health to determine whether to prepare to transition back to virtual learning with onsite supports.
Mr. Gilbert, if I could tell the board and the community, this PowerPoint was inadvertently not posted. It is now posted. You might have to refresh your computer, and it'll come up on your computer. I apologize to the community, but this will be available online now.
And if they are, and if they are following along, we are currently on Slide 8. Next, if a school district or other defined school area has all three benchmarks in the substantial category, Public Health recommends schools transition to virtual learning with onsite support services. So these are the two pieces I think are very important. Prior, again, moving from virtual to in-person, now this focuses on moving from in-person to virtual. The change that has been the conversation is having to be in red for all three benchmarks before you go to virtual. One of the conversations that was at the last board meeting was, I believe by Mrs. Love, asked, what does that mean for us? And one of the things I shared was, we've had a plan in place and we would stay the course. And I think it's very important to clarify what that meant. We were already as a district looking at what is going to occur after having two weeks in a red category. And in that third week, looking to see what was that measure? What was coming from the county as to what our district looked like? At that time, it was making sure that once we get that information, determining what our next steps were. It wasn't an automatic one way or the other because everything that we've had from documentation wasn't what do you do and how you're going to move back. So as a district, we've been having conversations to say, with this happening, what is our next step? What does that look like? So I think it's important to note when we look at what has come out from the county and what we've been doing as a district. We've been monitoring our data for some time. With that being said, when we look at the Maricopa County data, a couple of things I want to share, and this slide came from the COVID-19 Return to School Update, which was on November 12th, and it was hosted by the Maricopa County Public Health. You will see in this slide, the peak that you see is early on in June, July, to now early November. But what I really want to put your, have your eyes look to, and that is the graph to the bottom left, which really gets into focusing on, of the cases in Maricopa County, what are the age groups that are affected? And so when you look down, you'll see 0 to 19, 14%, 20 to 44 years of age, 49%, 45 to 64 years of age, 26%. When you look at the total number of cases that are in Maricopa County, other than those that are 65 and above, the next group that is affected the lowest, not meaning that they're not affected, but affected the lowest would be that group that is from age 0 to 19. In this next slide, also from county data, I wanted to be able to show you what we're seeing currently. You'll see to the left of this slide, this is June, July of where we're at our peak. And you'll see the far right is November, and at this particular one, it's November 7th. I know there is a November 14th that is out there on the county website that still shows that trend going up. It's not going down, it's still going up. And we can see that through this. But I think what's important is to note is where we are, understanding that we have to watch our data, and the trend is moving in an upward direction. Now, I think it's important, again, in making sure that we're transparent so people can see exactly what are we looking at when we're looking at data for our district. I think this is an important slide because this really gives us the zip code and broad picture of our district. You'll see that there's red and yellow throughout this area. Is it all of our district? No, but there's some key areas here. We have to remember that we are a district of 80 square miles. With that being said, you'll see that we have red in some of our areas and we have yellow in some of our areas. From in this 85142 area of Castile, to the 85225 to Chandler High, to the 85248 of Hamilton High School. And I just use those as landmarks so you can see the spread that we have from our district. But I think it's important when we look at this information, it really is on the surface. So we need to be able to look and see the full picture. So I think it's important that we peel back this first layer of the zip codes within our district and break it down a little more. Understanding that within our district, we have a number of zip codes. So if we start with 85297, you can see that in this, you will see in the red, we have cases per 100,000, is red for two weeks, which is why of having a red in two weeks, you will see that they're substantial, and it's saying, prepare for virtual. But you also see that there's still some yellow and green in this last week. Now, this is starting with last week's data, that was on the 12th. The next data that will be presented by the county will be tomorrow. So we'll see what that data looks like. But when you look at this chart, you'll see that cases per 100 is in red, and it's been red for the last two weeks. You'll also see that percent positivity has increased from 4.9 to 8.47, which is now in the yellow. I share that so you can see this, in this particular zip code, you will see two reds. Because there are two reds in that zip, in this zip code, that zip code is going to show as red. If we move to the next area, which is 85224, you will see that there is only one week, which was last week, in the red area, which is the case per 100,000. It wasn't in the previous week. You'll also see that the percent positivity did increase from 4.6 to 8.2. But because it has only been one week within this area, it's not red on our map. So understanding why is there a red or not a red also comes down to what are you seeing within that area for the percent positive or the 100 per 100,000? And you still see that there are some, there are some green as we look at the COVID-like illness. So then when we move to 85249, again, you still have one red. The possibility, depending on tomorrow's data, could be a second week of red, which then could make this area red. Currently, it is not. You'll see that there has been an increase in percent positivity from 3.4 to 6.8. So we'll see what tomorrow's data brings us. And then finally, you'll see that 85248, there's no red. So if there's red in their area of cases per 100,000, it will be their first week in red. And it wouldn't be till the following week if they're red again, that that would become a red area. Real important because you can see that different parts of our district, depending on where the zip code is, depends on where you fall and what's happening in the community. But we can't just focus on the, what's happening in regards to that particular community because we know within our district, 30, at least 30% of the population opening rolls to another area that's not within their boundary. So it's not so simple that you can just focus on a zip code. So that's why I wanted to also show you this slide, which is the district over the last five weeks. You will see that you have red in the per 100,000, and that's been the last two weeks, which is why the district turned red. Now, understand that this is, the district data comes from the collective of all of the zip codes. But if you have anywhere in your, in your district where you have a location that has moved from yellow to red because they've had two weeks of that data, it puts the district in red. So I think it's real important when you're looking at the district picture, you can't just figure that the whole district is sitting in the same spot. But the district is the collective. So you will see in, on October 15th, we had two greens and a yellow as it relates to where the district was. December 29th, we're still there. Some increase, but not much. We get to November 5th, and that's where you'll see our first, first measure in the district where there was red, and that was per 110, per 100,000, you know, in regards to that red. Then we moved into last week, and you have per 100,000, which gave us two reds. But you still have two yellows and a percent positivity, and two greens in COVID-like illness. So when you look at the data, you can see that it would, it would make, you really need to look at all the data from a perspective if you were going to make any decisions. That's why the, in the start of this conversation, it was really looking at localized how you're going to address it. Because not every area within our district looks the same. We understand that the trend is moving up, and we have to address that and make sure that we're following that information. But we have to understand that early on, when we had our presentation from our, from our person from the county, the goal was we looked at where we are for two weeks. We would get into the third week and see what is that data telling us, and we would have conversations and have a plan. But we wouldn't have a knee-jerk reaction as to automatically make any particular decision. So when we look at where are we from a global perspective of our district, and then narrowing it down into where we are as it relates to the zip codes or our school, I think that's where we need to really look at the data that we have. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rothen.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Members of the governing board, Dr. Castile. Before I jump into some slides about our individual sites and how COVID-19 has affected our schools, I just want to reiterate something that Dr. Gilbert spoke to, is that prior to opening schools for in-person, we had county data to go on. Now that we've opened schools and been open since September 14th, we now have some site data to look at. And we also know of the mitigation strategies that we've put in place. So it's important as we look at our in-person learning that we take a look specifically at the school sites and that data, and also our mitigation strategies. So here's our current mitigation strategies. We, as you know, we've increased the frequency of disinfecting and sanitizing our hard surfaces at our schools. We have an increased focus on hand hygiene, and as you all know, we have sanitation stations in every room. Teachers have been great, and principals have been great about reminding students to wash their hands when they come in from breaks and at numerous times during the day. Social distancing protocols are in place where possible. Cohorting, especially at the elementary schools, and limited social interaction in classrooms in common areas is taking place. Obviously, we have adequate ventilation and air filtration systems in our schools. We're currently contact tracing, so we are doing that through our Health Services Department. And quarantining protocols are in place for students that come into close contact with students who are positive. And the final two I want to stress because they truly are important to our mitigation strategies. The first is the parent support that we've gotten thus far about making sure that they check in with their students and keep sick students at home. That's the number one way to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in our schools is to ensure that if students are sick, that parents are keeping those students home and monitoring their symptoms and getting them tested if possible. And then finally, the mandatory face covering policy, which we've implemented since students have been back in-person. There has been some new research on that. The CDC's updated its research regarding face masks. And I'm not going to read this whole thing to you, but I underlined what I think is probably the most important statement there is, "The prevention benefits of masking is derived from the combination of source control and personal protection for the mask wear." So prior to this, there was, it was unclear whether or not masks helped stop the spread for both the person wearing it, to spread those droplets, and also how well did it protect someone who's wearing a mask from inhaling those droplets? And so now the CDC is supporting mask wearing as a preventative measure for both someone who may be infected and from spreading, and also protecting a person who's healthy from transmitting the, transmitting the virus. So we know that masks work, and we're going to continue that policy. So now let's take a look at the CUSD schools and COVID by the numbers, and take a look at how COVID-19 is affecting our campuses. So what I have here is cumulative positive cases reported on CUSD campuses since we resumed in-person instruction on September 14th. The total number of staff is 46 out of approximately 5,000 staff, and that's a positivity rate of .01. Total students in-person, and that's 178 of the approximate 38,000 students that are attending our schools in-person, that's a positivity rate of .05. And then we've also added the total students in our Chandler Online Academy, and that's our 100% virtual option for students, and 28 out of the approximately 6,000 students attending Chandler Online Academy full-time, and that's a positivity rate of .05. What's interesting about this is that as you can see, the positivity rate in the Chandler Online Academy, so these are students that have never stepped foot on our campus, they're at home learning virtually, is the same positivity rate as students that are attending in-person. And so we know COVID is in our community, and we know it's in our school as well, and we're doing what we can to mitigate that. But it's interesting to see that the positivity rate is the same both for students attending virtually and in-person. We're also reporting per schools, how many positive cases have been reported. Again, cumulative, the number of schools reporting at least one positive case has been 35 of our schools. The number of schools without any positive cases reported has been 10 of our schools. And currently, the number of schools without an active positive case is 32. So two out of three of our schools currently do not have any positive cases reported on their campus. This is the updated dashboard. And as you know, this has gone through a little bit of a facelift within the last week or so. This is updated daily on our website. It has the total number of employees and students at each site, the confirmed active cases, the percentage of active cases, and then the total resolved cases. And so I've had some, some questions regarding, we've all had some questions regarding active cases and what that looks like, and how a case would get to this dashboard. And an active case is a case in which we have documentation from the parent of a positive test or documentation from Maricopa County of a positive test. Once we get that documentation, then we initiate our contact, contact tracing, and then that number gets posted on our dashboard. And so currently, if you were to check our dashboard as of right now, again, I reported what that positivity rate looks like at the schools. Five of our schools are reporting three or more cases. And of those five schools, four out of the five are secondary schools. We do have one elementary school that's reporting more than three cases. So overall, relatively, overall, the active cases haven't reached that, you know, aren't over that three number for the most part. Now let's take a look at our quarantine data. Obviously, as we have positive cases on our campus, that doesn't just affect the student that's positive, it affects those students for which they come into close contact with. So we wanted to provide some information, again, on the cumulative numbers of students that have been quarantined since we resumed in-person instruction on September 14th. We have 112 students at the elementary level, 303 at the junior high level, and 1,461 at the high school level, for a total of 1,876 students, and that's as of today, who we have needed to quarantine due to their close contact exposure with students that were positive. So I wanted to add on there as well that the total number of students testing positive while quarantined due to close contact with a positive student was nine. So one of the questions we know that you've gotten and we've gotten as well is, how many students, when we've quarantined them, have actually ended up testing positive? And so we have had nine students that have ended up testing positive while on quarantine. The total number of staff testing positive after their close contact with students on our campuses is zero. So we have not, we've not been notified of any of our staff that, due to close contact with a student on our campus, have tested positive. I want to caveat this number to make sure that we're all aware that this is just data. And so obviously, when we've quarantined these students, it's not to say that some of these students may not have been asymptomatic. Some of these students may not have had mild symptoms that they didn't get tested. The other thing it shows as well is that the nine students who ended up positive while on quarantine, doesn't necessarily mean that they contracted that or transmitted that due to their close contact with a student on our campus. Obviously, this is data and a piece of data that we've been asked several questions about, so we thought important that you had it. To summarize this, our early CUSD data does not indicate that COVID-19 is being transmitted on our campuses really at any substantial rate. So when we take a look at the overall district and school data picture, I think it's important to outline the following things. First, the district metrics that were in red, as shared by Dr. Gilbert, is not representative of the COVID-19 incidence on our campus. Early school data suggests transmission rates in our schools do not mirror the transition rates in the community. Now, the next two bullets might be the driving force behind the first two. So staff and students have been following our mitigation strategies that appear to be preventing the spread of COVID-19 on our campuses. And obviously, as I shared before, masking up matters. The new CDC research confirms the importance of wearing a mask. So overall, when we take a look at Maricopa County and our district data, along with the specific school site data, it does suggest a more localized approach to school closures. And so with that, we'd like to share our plan for continued in-person instruction, and then share the targeted temporary site closures if necessary. And I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Gilbert.
Thank you. So Mr. Rothen was able to share that data with you. It's important to know that there's a lot of information that we need to take into account when making these decisions. We look at the numbers of positive cases on campus, the number of students that were quarantined. quarantined, but we also need to look at, in maintaining in-person learning, what we're seeing is a successful mitigation strategy occurring, whether it's face coverings, hand washing, cleaning that is happening in the classrooms, in the hallways. Quality of instruction is stronger with face-to-face opportunities for students. Average daily attendance and student engagement is higher in a face-to-face. Interventions and tutoring have greater impact when a teacher is able to work with that student directly in in-person. Cohorting of student groups help maintain stability, same-classroom groups, for example, in elementary. Currently, percentage of school cases are lower than community percentages. Social-emotional support's available for all students and staff at the site. Able to better meet the needs of special education students, as well as maintain employment for support staffs, such as food and nutrition workers, bus drivers, classrooms, Paris. Eliminating in-person learning, more opportunity for community spread with more unstructured time. One thing we do know is when school starts to when school ends, they are at a location that is being mitigated. We're working as hard as we can to keep them as distant as possible, wearing masks and cleaning, where when they're not at school, where will they be? Hopefully at home, but possibly in the community, hanging out with other friends, doing other things. Technology or access divide across student and environments, we know has been an issue in talking with parents. Instruction may have reduced student-teacher interaction. What can be done over technology becomes difficult for some students to connect. Average daily attendance is lower due to limited engagement. Also, finding kids that we're trying to connect with because of going to virtual, making sure that we are getting to everyone who needs to be at school, but at times having difficulty finding where they are. Less controlled mitigation strategies from a district level, as no consistent cohorts available, as I mentioned. Research shows online school is more difficult for students in grades K3. Parents are not instructional specialists. We've had conversations. Limited on-demand feedback for assistance when parents are trying to help, or siblings are trying to help their younger sibling and not having the ability. Excludes or limits students from social-emotional supports. Isolation from peers at home, limited social interactions, limited access of social workers and counselors. I know that there was a presentation recently from the state superintendent, and she shared that there was, in Arizona, 31 suicides by students last year, and this year we're already up to 47. I think it's an important number to note. Virtual learning does not meet needs of some special education students, and the impact on parents' ability to be present at home when students are at home. So with that, I will then turn it over to Mr. Narducci.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Madam President, members of the board. Based upon the localized data and actual impacts to our students, staff, and school communities, we're recommending the following plan to transition to temporary virtual scenario when a school or schools reach confirmed active positive COVID-19 cases among staff and students. Important to note that that number would be staff and student cases. Our plan includes a percentage of active COVID-19 cases to move a site to the temporary virtual model. The percentages we've come up with for elementary schools are 2% active cases at that particular site. For junior high schools, thank you, Craig, for junior high schools, 1.5%, and for high schools, 1%. Exceptions may be made for alternative sites. As you know, our alternative sites are quite smaller, and so we would look at what those cases are there and make a decision that may reflect more of that 2% like the elementary is as well. It's important that the data is reviewed as a whole, and so a bird's-eye view is very important, as we've seen in the presentations, both by Mr. Rother and Dr. Gilbert. But we have to view affirmative actions and actions that we take intentionally by looking at the localized data. So what might that look like? So for elementaries that are between 500 to 800 students, I'd like to bring us through a few scenarios. An elementary of 500 students and staff would require 10 active cases, confirmed cases, for that school to transition. An elementary of 800 students, which would be a school of our 31 elementary sites, would have 16 active cases. A junior high of 700 students would have 11 active cases at the 1.5%, and a junior high of 900 elementary students and staff would have 14 active cases. Our high schools would have, a smaller high school of 2,500 would have 25 active cases between staff and students, and a larger high school of 4,000 students and staff, 40 active cases. You may ask why the percentages are different between elementary and high school. Well, at elementary, we do have the ability, with the lower numbers, to have additional mitigation strategies that the high schools may not be able to put in. And then also the sheer difference, and I think people can see the sheer difference of a percentage of numbers. Elementary schools are quite lower than our junior high schools, lower enrolled, and then, of course, staff is a higher, a higher percentage of allocated staff to, at the high school level and the junior highs. So what's our temporary school closure timeline and process? When a school hits the threshold of student-staff active cases, and believe me, we look at this multiple times during the day. Ms. Hartley is on the phone and with Mr. Rother, Dr. Gilbert, and myself. It seems like we have one-to-one connections throughout the day. So we want to make sure that our families are notified 48 hours in advance of any temporary school closure or school closures. This provides proper time for parents to make adjustments for safe care of our children. We have to understand that we're still responsible for our children throughout this closure period, so we want to make sure that that transition is done successful for parents. Instructional model shifts to virtual learning. So when a school is closed, and when they hit that threshold, we go to virtual learning. It's not a blended learning, it's a virtual learning. With our students, we've done that, and we've modified at the beginning of this year to become a little more successful, and our teachers have put in so much time and effort into really working with that model. So we'd go back to what they know best, and would move into the virtual. School sites would distribute the computers for students who do not have access. So it may be that they need the device, it may not, it may mean that they have to have connectivity, so we would ensure that that distribution, rather than before when we went down as a whole district, we did centralized distribution. This would be at the site to be able to expedite the computers to students who need them for that time period. Staff and teachers would report to the campus 24 hours after school closure is called. What happens during that first 24 hours is really important. We would go through the school to disinfect, and would have a district-wide fogging. Mr. Fletcher and his team actually are doing that now when we have cases. We'll go in and fog classrooms, or hallways, or wings, or entire portions of campuses just as a preventative measure. This would include that happening during the first 24 hours. So after the first 24 hours, everybody would be out of the school, the disinfecting of surfaces and the fogging would take place. These are mitigation strategies that the county would work with us on to be able to move forward with. But that's why that 24 hours, the next 24 hours, teachers would come back in so they have all the resources available to them to continue that virtual learning within the classroom environment. When a school hits the threshold of student-staff active COVID-19 cases, the school will be closed for five days. Now, that five-day closure may accompany a weekend, which will require a seven-day rest time for that school. If it hits the five days within a week, of course, we'd have a nine-day. But what we're sure of is that it would allow most positive cases that are triggered, the temporary closure, to clear before returning back to the impacted site. So it would give us the required time for everybody to come back in with a fresh start, and for those, for that to dissipate through that area or that community. It allows for students with COVID-like symptoms to be evaluated during that time as well. And then it also allows the opportunity for students to be tested, or staff, for COVID-19 and obtain results. So that period of time does give us time to be able to do that. Our recommendations don't come lightly, but we also look at the fact that our localized data shows different things for different schools within our district, and this plan will provide us an opportunity to act intentional, to adhere the right amount of fix or the measure of being able to put some preventative and measures in place by the site, and enable for us to focus and concentrate on that site, and then bring them back together to continue the in-person learning and monitor the numbers from there. So we present the plan to you based on all the input and the data that we have and made available to you, and are welcome for suggestions on the plan as you see it moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Narducci. I appreciate it. Dr. Gilbert, thank you. Mr. Rother, thank you. Lots of detail and data analysis has gone through this, a collection of data. Personally, I am very, very happy to see that our mitigation strategies are actually being proven by our data, that they are effective. That really is a testimony to all of our staff who are, and families who are complying and are taking this seriously, and I truly appreciate that, not only staff, but also the community support in helping us to be able to keep our students in the classroom with a live teacher. Are there any questions? Mrs. McGee.
Excuse me. Thank you all for excellent presentation. I have a couple of questions, and I'm going to go backwards first. If we close a school, we're giving the 48-hour notice to the parents that we're closing the school, and then cleaning and being closed for at least five days. Are we going to send notification to the parents of a date that we anticipate the school will be reopened?
Yes, correct. We will make sure that when letters go out and communication goes out, I'm sure it'll be also done through our school messaging system, that it would also have the return date that's anticipated. We'll also be monitoring data during that time as well to see if there's any impacts to that, but we will definitely procommunicate so people can make those choices and know how long that school is closed for.
Okay, thank you. And then I want to ask a few questions about students that are at home because they have COVID, or they're at home because they're quarantined. So their school is still open, but, you know, certain students are quarantined at home. What type of learning assistance do we have available for those students?
So students that are quarantined, and we started this last Monday, students that are quarantined are able to join the classroom virtually on Google Meets. So teachers are, we've identified students that are home and communicate that with the teacher, and they would open up a Google Meets. And teachers are responsible then for providing some virtual instruction, and it's more of a view that a student can view into the classroom, see the live instruction happening, the direct instruction, either email a teacher, or, excuse me, or chat a teacher in the chatroom, or in some situations even ask a question virtually if they need some clarification. But any of our students that are on quarantine, as of last Monday, we started that as a virtual option for them to view live instruction.
Okay, thank you. And that's for all grade levels?
Correct.
Okay. And then do we have a pool of tutors, so students that, you know, are falling behind because they were quarantined or for whatever reason? Do we have tutors available that a parent can ask for help from?
So as of right now, we're requesting that parents work through their classroom teacher if they need additional time. We have had situations where students either couldn't get on or need some clarification that they couldn't ask during class, where they can contact that teacher, and every one of the teachers, obviously, are there after school, and they can assist them at that point. We don't have a pool of standalone tutors that goes in and sort of helps tutor students on quarantine, but our teachers are available for support when they're not teaching.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. Surrounding school districts, Gilbert, Higley, Queen Creek, do we happen to know what status they're in as far as virtual, in-person, et cetera?
So I can't speak to all the districts, but Gilbert, the largest district close to us, they're implementing a very similar threshold for when their students will transition. I believe they had a school transition to a hybrid model last week when they hit the 1% for their high schools. Their percentages are the same as ours, so 1% at the high school, 1.5 at the junior high, and then two at elementary. The surrounding districts are, to my understanding, mostly in-person to some extent. Queen Creek, Higley are both in-person. Gilbert is in-person with this threshold, and so districts are similar to us. And again, our threshold levels are the same as Gilbert's.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Evans, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. I probably would like to come back with some more, some follow-up questions. Thank you for a good presentation. I think I was not, this isn't what I was expecting, anticipating. And for all three of you, and everybody in this room, and everybody on every campus, this is hard. This is really, really hard. And Mr. Rother, you brought up a really good point. This is data, but we're talking about students and kids, who are the same people, and families, right? And the one thing that I think we're not talking about enough here is the impact that all of this has on our educators and staff in the schools, right? But let me start with something I've said before, and something I'll say for the next three weeks, because that's as long as I'll be here. You're talking about how we go through transitions. And what we know is that we've seen changes from the CDC, we've seen changes from the federal government, we've seen changes from Maricopa County Health Department, right? And we have, but what's the thing that we have to do? We have to educate kids, and we have to keep our staff feeling good about the way they're educating kids. And it's hard, because they've had to make a lot of changes, too. So one of the things, a couple of things that I'll say is, we have to be, and have to find a way to be as consistent as possible for the education of our students, right? So 1,870, where's the number? 1,876 students have gone in and out of quarantine, and we have Thanksgiving holiday coming up. I do have a question coming up, but we know that if spread is happening from the outside into the district, we're probably going to continue to see more of that. If not over this holiday, over the next one, and ongoing. So again, that transition thing, we have to look at, how do we maintain the quality of instruction for our kids, right? And I think we can do a better job of that. And teachers right now are starting to really fall into creating more rigor. But how do we look at those 1,800 kids, almost 1,900 kids, and make it so that they're, it's almost seamless? How do we do that? How do we make it so it's seamless right now for kids who are in-person? Because when it really comes down to it, as parents, we have to make choices for the health and well-being of our own families, and we may decide that our student right now should not be in a building, especially at the high school level, should not necessarily be in a building. How do we keep their, the rigor of their education and the continuity of their education in place if we choose to have them not be brick and mortar right at that point?
Yeah, so, Mr. Evans, the, like I stated before, the Google Meets hopefully will provide a level of that. Is it the same as being in the classroom? Absolutely not. And can a teacher, is it an easy job for a teacher to do both virtual and in-person? No. No. But our teachers have been doing it. They started last week, and so as we continue to do it with students that are on quarantine, I'm hopeful that that process will get easier and students will get more and more out of those lessons if they're quarantined. I want to answer your question another way, too, and reiterate something I stated before, is that we really need parent support, because what we're seeing is we know there's spread in the community. And I think that even though we're not finding students contracting COVID in our schools, we know what's happening in the community. And we need parents' help, we really need parents' help, to monitor their students. And if their students are sick, if the students don't feel well, keep them home, monitor them, and don't send them to school sick. Because every time that happens and a student that's positive is around other students, it does force us to quarantine students and to send them home for two weeks.
Right.
And so we're doing the best job we can to ensure that they can still view their classroom in live instruction if that happens, but that doesn't happen if parents can help us in keeping their kids home and monitoring their symptoms.
Okay, I'm going to go back to one of the points you just made from what I made that you made earlier. And that's that teachers didn't just start doing this last week. They started doing this back when school started because everybody was virtual, right? So what is preventing us from keeping that flexibility for any student who just, you know, kids don't feel safe, not just the parents, kids don't feel safe. So what is it to have a student just say, you know what, I'm self-quarantining, not because I need to, but because I don't feel safe being around other people right now because of maybe the habits that they're doing. So I'm going to go, I'm going to leave. How do I access that virtual, you know, how do I access Google Meets so I can participate from home?
Yeah. So that's a great question. And I think that some of our students who decided to do the complete virtual option are at COA. And so there is an option there for students to be 100% virtual. Right now, in terms of the live viewing of the classroom, we did, you know, we did do that for quarantined students as a way to begin to implement that. As of right now, that's who that option is for, but you bring up a good question, is that something that we can expand and offer to more students? Currently, we're reserving that for our quarantined students, and so that's a small group of students that may be on. And some teachers may not have any students on quarantine. For most of our teachers, that's the case. But it is something certainly that we could take a look at in the future.
Okay, because really, if I just go home, you have, people are not really coming through to us. Lindsay, you can maybe jump in on this. There are plenty of people who are not going to say the reason they're not at school right now for the next six days. But, and we may think we know what that is, but, you know, without true evidence and documentation, we don't know. So all of a sudden, you know, how am I getting educated because of the fact that I chose not to be in school? Because I got a car accident and broke my leg? I mean, there could be many, many reasons, right? People are not forthcoming all the time.
Sure.
Just, Mr. Evans, just a couple of things that I just wanted to share with the board a little bit is quarantine is a mitigation strategy. And just in the fact that it's there and that our numbers are relevant and that we do have a higher quarantining rate means that the mitigation strategy is working, that they're tracing. I'd be really, I'd be a little cautious to think if we had low quarantining that we were actually tracing as well as they are. And that's what's creating that piece. We are looking at active teaching. It's hard to do. It is really hard to do when you have students online as well as in your classroom. But our teachers are really stepping up and working through it. Our plan helps to maybe alleviate a little of that when those numbers get to be a little higher. And so, and again, the work at the high schools, when you have some students being quarantined, is a little more difficult because it does go to all of the classrooms, most of the teachers. Where in an elementary, you have one teacher who at most times, especially in the primary classrooms, are wanting that student to be connected so they come back with less gaps. But the one point I wanted to provide, too, is that having that number is a good thing because that's a great mitigation strategy, along with our other mitigation strategies. However, cohorting of schools is one of probably the best cohorts that are available. And you'll see in other nations, they're utilizing that group as a cohort that is the last to go before everything else, restaurants, other pieces, because of the fact that kids come to a routine schedule, five days a week. And even if they're in athletics or things after school, they still have that continual schedule. So it's easier to keep that group co-horted when we don't have that, we don't know where they are, and that's where you get more community spread, when your cohort groups are just not able to be established and continuous. And so I just wanted to bring that point up as well, that the schools become a very good cohort group. But when we hit those percentages in our plan, we know there's something else we have to do.
Ms. Love, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Did you have some questions?
Is it my turn to go?
Yes.
Yes, I do. I just want to, thank you for the presentation, and I just kind of want to share the sheer irony of me being at home, sick, awaiting my own COVID test during this presentation. And, you know, if I can go back to slide, I think it was 10, where we broke down the age group, we did a lot of focusing in this presentation on 0 to 19 and how that was lower, right? But I'm in that 20 to 44-year-old age group, right? That's 49%. And I'm wondering if there was any consideration as to what the average age of our staff is. And I know that you broke it down cumulatively in terms of like our staff and the positivity rate for them. But as Mr. Evans said, we just finished with Halloween, which we saw a bit of a spike because of parties, right? We've got Thanksgiving and we've got Christmas to go. And we have families who may not be working with us to let us know when, you know, their student or their child is sick. They're not taking them for testing. They're keeping them home for maybe one or two days and sending them back into the classroom, which puts our teachers and staff at risk. And I am concerned about our children and their positivity rate. But I think that one of the things that we're missing is how this is going to impact the positivity rate of our staff. When we have two holidays coming up, we have a lack of testing and a lack of transparency within our community.
Ms. Love, I thank you for sharing that information. I will assure you, our staff is one of our focuses. One of the things that, Mr. Evans, you brought up, and that was we hadn't had any conversation about our staff. And Mr. Rother and Mr. Narducci shared, you know, what does that look like for students if they're at home quarantined, and why not make that shift? Because it is a difficult, it is a difficult task. Since we started these meetings and started with COVID, that has been something that's come up every time, is how are we going to make sure that, because we can say we have really strong when students are in class and that in-person learning from the teacher being in the classroom is what we're looking for. But then we have students at home, and we know that there's different reasons why students are at home, whether we're sending them home because of quarantine, or something's happened in their family and they have to quarantine themselves. And then figuring out how can we do something for those students, which was the reason why we went to at least having the student be able to see and hear what's going on in the classroom, because we were already using Google Classroom for them to get work and things of that nature. So those are some of the things that we looked at. But the difficulty of now saying that the teaching in the classroom is going to be as good as it should be while the teachers are trying to make sure they're moving through what's happening with the student at home and answering questions and keeping them engaged and at the same time keeping the students engaged. I'm not saying it isn't possible. We'd have to figure out what does that look like? Because there are others that are doing that, and I can only speak anecdotally from having conversations. They're not all that excited about doing it, and there's a lot of people saying they're overwhelmed in how they're doing that. So I'm not saying it can't be done, but it has to be a discussion on what would that look like? And then our families that have students on campus and our families that have students at home, understanding it's not going to look like when you were normally in the classroom with the teacher because of the load that's going to be put on the teacher. As it relates to Mrs. Love's question and her statement in regards to our teachers, the goal that has been put out by Mr. Rother and his team is, how does the classroom look when we're trying to mitigate things that are happening on campus? And that is, even though we have, we have great teachers in Chandler that still want to move through the classroom, which is great, but the goal is, let's keep distance, not just from students, but from teachers from students. And so now having to teach from the front of the room, which will assist some of those students that are having to watch the lesson from home, that we can keep distance from our teachers and our students so that we can do the best we can to keep them distant from what's going on. And making sure that when we have students that are positive, we're moving them and the quarantined students out so that we can try and mitigate it as much as possible. We're at a difficult situation because we're here and teachers are teaching because they love kids. They love teaching, they love making sure that students can learn. At the same time, we have 45,000 students within our district, and many of them want to be in the classroom. And so now we have to figure out, how can we approach that so that, one, we can keep our students and staff safe and still do what we're supposed to be doing at this time, and that is teaching students? So it's a balance that we're trying to work through that is difficult at best.
Well, I think so. I think I missed where the average age of our teaching and teachers and staff were. But I will say, from my experience, I wear too much, I social distance, I stay away from large group gatherings. I am at work two days a week, but I spend primarily, you know, my time in my office, distance from my staff. And even with the mitigation strategies that I have taken, I'm still at home with a virus that has not been determined, and it could be COVID. And so I think that that is something that we need to take into account, that mitigation strategies, sure, you know, I'm all for it. But if we're not looking at our teachers and their health and well-being, we're going to have teachers who are going to walk. And I've heard it from several teachers that they're scared. They, you know, don't know what the next few months are going to look like. And they feel like they are not being respected, not only by us, but the community at large, and their fears are not being taken seriously. And I think that that is something that I would like to see addressed moving forward. Like, I'm wondering, you know, did we sit down with teachers and discuss this plan with them?
No, we did not have a...
How they felt about the percent positivity rate that we've chosen, or the fact that we've chosen to only close for five days, which for me, I heard that, and I'm like, why not 10 to 14? Like, you know, did we do any consultation with the educators who have the heaviest list and the staff who have the heaviest list?
We shared this information with the association. As for the number, the age of teachers, I can make sure Dr. Nance will be able to get you that information. And we will look at this as we move forward and get more information to make sure we're addressing the needs of our teachers.
And the other thing that I'm hearing from teachers and parents alike is, you know, going back to Mr. Evans' point, is can we trust the dashboard when we have parents who are openly online telling us that they are not going to be transparent with us? Or, you know, keeping their kids out for a day and then sending them back into the classroom? Like, is the dashboard accurate when we have those kinds of questions looming?
Well, the thing I would say...
And it's not just, you know, fear-based, and it's not just, you know, story, or, you know, we've been presented with screenshots from legit parents in our district.
Well, the thing I would say about our dashboard is, what we are putting on the dashboard is the information we are collecting. So we know that there could be anyone that is deciding to come in, come in sick, send their students to school. We are doing our best to mitigate and control what we can as to what's happening on our schools and our campus. And it's unfortunate that you have that situation. I will say, prior to COVID, there are students that were medicated and sent to school. And we have to hope that we can keep getting the information out to our families as to the need to keep kids home if they're sick and for us to do the best we can in collecting the data that we see. It is unfortunate, but as for the dashboard, it's the data that we are collecting because we're sending students home. Some may not, may not be getting a test, and we wouldn't know that, just like we wouldn't know if someone is asymptomatic and they're coming on campus. But when we find information out, we are utilizing that to make sure students are going home, those that are quarantined, as tough as it is with the numbers that we're sending home, we're trying to do.
And please understand that I'm not saying that you guys aren't doing the best that you can, because I understand that you're doing the best that you can with the information that is provided. But I think, you know, that just goes to the point that we can have all the data in front of us and we're still operating blind. It's that, what Dr. Castile says in terms of like flying the plane as you're building it thing. And it's a question that our community members have, and they're not feeling very safe with these stories and these screenshots floating out there. So I think that's something that we need to take into consideration, especially when we do data-heavy presentations, what is the data telling us versus what is the data not telling us? Does that make sense?
No, definitely. And I would agree with you.
Yeah. The other question that I have, because I've been getting it a lot, and I think that you alluded to it, but I apologize because I'm over the phone, so it goes in and out. So if a child in a household is sick, right, and maybe they test positive, but they have a sibling who goes to a different school who is not positive, not displaying any symptoms, is the expectation that that well-child stays home and quarantines with their family?
Yes.
Or can they, okay, perfect, perfect. That's a question I've been getting a lot, and I thought that it was the answer that you said, but I just wanted to get that spoken aloud.
Yes, and they would be able to, because they would be on quarantine, they'd have access to Google Classroom.
We also talked a lot about online being more difficult for K through 3, and I hear that, right? But what is the data for online education for our older grades, like our 4th through 12? Particularly since our secondaries, they're getting ready to go off to college, right? And we know that our colleges right now are online, right? And even before COVID, we've had colleges and grad schools who have operated with a hybrid model of being online in classrooms or full online. So do we have any data on how the effectiveness of online education for our older grades?
I don't, I don't have any data to share, but I know that online is difficult for many students. It's not for everyone, and we understand that. When we were looking at what we can do within our district, our online was one of our programs that we had to offer. We've had to also put some things in place with office hours, as well as teachers having open labs for kids to be able to get help. Not perfect situation, and we're continuing to improve that so that we can help our students. We've added new, some more counselors to our online, as well as more success coaches, which aren't counselors. They're really focusing on students that may not be logging on, may not be connecting, and helping them and find out what the problems are so that they can get them connected to the resources. But that is still, for us, we're building that right now and getting that moving forward to help our students.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, too, because we tend to knock online education, right? And I guess that online education is not for everybody. I certainly understand that. However, online education, there are possibilities and opportunities. You know, when I was in grad school, they talked about online education as the next wave and the next frontier in getting education to people who maybe have the least amount of access. And I'm wondering if maybe we can also change that dialogue and maybe, because we are a district that is innovative, start thinking and conceptualizing what online education can look like and, you know, how we can use this to our advantage? Because we don't know what the next few months are going to hold, and I would like us to see us build something stronger. For instance, too, you know, I'm getting a lot of emails and phone calls from sped parents who, you know, maybe have like medically fragile children and, or something to that effect, or don't want their kids in the classroom being exposed. But we have no sped opportunities for COA. So, you know, I'm wondering if maybe somebody could sit down with our sped parents or some of the groups that, you know, I think it's, what is the one that we just went to the presentation for? presentation for? Is it CPAC, one of them? And just kind of like flesh that out a bit, because we do have a number of sped parents who feel like they've been left out of the dialogue.
Mrs. Love, this is Larry, just to address a couple of things there. So in regards to virtual learning, we are having discussions about what virtual learning can look like. We have a future-ready schools process that is in place already to take a comprehensive look at technology. And what we want that virtual, what we want both the in-person experience through using technology and the virtual experience using technology to look like in Chandler in the future. I could tell you, we just met, and that's a collaboration between business partnerships, folks from the city, our teachers, our site administrators, we even have a student that serves on that team to look at how we can best utilize technology and in the virtual setting as well. And a lot of our conversation focused around what that will look like post-COVID. So we are currently doing that for sure. In regards to the special education parents, we meet quarterly with the CPAC, which is our Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. And they meet with us to share with us their concerns, and we brainstorm ways to break down barriers for our students with special needs to access curriculum, to learn at the level that we expect them to. And so we are currently meeting with the CPAC, and we'll continue to do that.
Perfect. And I have more questions, but I want to just be respectful of everybody else's time. So I will turn it back over to Barb.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Mrs. Brenner, do you have some questions?
I did have a question. So if teachers are exposed to a student in the classroom or another staff member, or any staff member, not just teachers, what is the procedure, and are we actually following that with each case?
Yeah, so if a teacher has a close contact with a student or another staff member, they are notified of that. Mrs. Hartley could speak even more specifically if there are specific situations or what that process looks like. But we are following through with our protocols the same way we would if a student comes into contact with another student that's positive.
So if a student or staff member is in contact with someone who's positive, they are quarantined for 14 days?
No. So our staff is essential workers, so they wouldn't be quarantined for those 14 days, but they are notified that they've come into close contact with a student or a staff member that's tested positive.
So when you say essential workers, I know there are multiple school districts who quarantine teachers for 14 days. Are you just saying that that's an optional thing the district has tended to use to justify not having them quarantined?
Well, I mean, I would defer to Wendy on-
Because it's not required, I guess is what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I defer to Wendy on-
You're an essential worker, you have to report. There's no law like that.
Yeah. Yeah, we have not quarantined our teachers. I'll defer to Wendy on the HR perspective of that. But as of right now, we do make sure that our teachers are aware if they've come into close contact with another staff member or a student that tests positive. But in terms of mandating that we quarantine, I can refer to Dr. Nance on that one.
We've tried to avoid sending them home altogether, but we've made some accommodations for them. So for instance, we've had a teacher working out of an empty classroom at a site and working with some of her virtual students or small groups where we can have more Plexiglas up. We've worked with Lindsay Hartley on the appropriate PPE those staff members are wearing and checking symptoms and making sure they're staying socially distanced while they're still at work if they've had a possible exposure. And that's not limited to teachers. We do it with our support staff as well.
So as you might imagine, that concerns me, that we're not quarantining staff members who otherwise would be quarantined. If they were any other person on campus, they would be, you know, any student on campus, they'd be quarantined. And that other districts are following that. And then my other question, I guess, is about, like, when you were thinking of this plan, it kind of feels to me like it's what we expected the county or state to create for our schools when, to judge when there's going to be an outbreak. So, you know, there was an expectation that the county was going to create, they never did, of course, but that they were going to create cut-and-dry criteria, like if you hit a certain percentage point, that's an outbreak, and they haven't done that. So this kind of feels like what some people at least expected the county or the state to do to create, like, all right, this has gotten out of hand, there's an outbreak, we need to shut this school down, right? So is that what you were thinking when you-
That's correct. Also, none of this gets done in isolation. We have to work directly with the county. They will know our plan, they will know our percentages, and they'll still be working with us when we hit those thresholds. They may come up with other pieces with support teams that they have in place, but we really felt that we had to take the lead based on knowing what's happening at our schools best.
If Ms. Love wants to go again, or if someone else has some more questions? Those were just my couple of questions.
I actually have a couple of questions. So we talk about the virtual learning, and we are offering that to quarantined students. But this, the virtual learning that we are providing to them is not the same as what we were doing at the beginning of the school year. Could you explain the differences between the two? And then explain, when we close a school, what the difference is between what we were seeing in, at the end of August or during the month of August, and what we would be seeing at a school that has been temporarily closed?
Yes. So the main difference between the virtual learning that would be taking place right now for students on quarantine, and this is an obvious one, but the biggest difference is that teacher has to teach both in-person students that are there in front of them and also find a way to allow the students virtually to view the live instruction. The interaction that can take place is certainly limited if a student's online as opposed to in-person. And that teacher, as Dr. Gilbert talked about, they have to be somewhat stationary. They may need to make sure that they're in front of the computer while they're doing their direct instruction. That is very much limited to, you know, just viewing the instruction and having some limited interaction. What the virtual instruction looked like prior to in-person was that teachers would essentially plan their two-hour, at the high school level, their two-hour lesson, at the elementary level, their daily lesson, and provide a certain amount of time and instruction virtually, where there was some dialogue over Google Meets. All the students were there and interacted virtually online. And then additional resources were provided for students to work for the rest of the period. And teachers decided how best to check in, but there were some minimum expectations regarding how many minutes they worked with students virtually, how many times they interacted. The current model of virtual with Google Meets and students that are on quarantine, that's much more teacher-directed, because teachers know their lessons best, they know when and how a student can best interact online, because they do have to balance the in-person with the students that are quarantined. When we go into, or if we go into a situation where we're needing to temporarily close that school, the plan is, is to ensure that students can get on virtually. So that's why we need a little bit of time before students, we actually shut the school down, is to be able to provide students with technology who needs them so they can log on and be interactive in the virtual setting for that five-day school closure. Our intention is if we do have to do that on a temporary basis for those five days that the schools are closed, that that would look a lot similar to the way it looked in the first quarter, where teachers are going through their normal schedule, interacting with students virtually, and sort of transitioning back to where we were during the first quarter, knowing that that was going to be for a very limited timeframe of five days.
Sorry? And then-
Mrs. Moss, can I give you a brief example, just real quickly? Dr. Nance and I were talking earlier today about a scenario, and it's almost a different way of looking at how we're educating right now. It's totally different. If teachers are saying they're tired across the state, it's because they've never done this before. So, for example, today, we were talking about a story of a student who was going to specialized services. So she was in her regular classroom, going to specialized services. Let's say it's speech. Let's say it's Susie that was going to speech. Well, the speech teacher in a specialized location was saying, well, I guess Johnny's not here, so we're just going to have to go on. And Susie goes, well, no, Johnny is here. And she takes the laptop in her hand and just turns it around, Johnny's on the computer. But for that teacher, she had to realize too that some kids are going to be learning at home, and they're going to still be exposed and connected to the same instruction. But it was kind of a weird thing that Johnny was there. He just wasn't there. So this is a lot for teachers to really get a hold of. And yet, this school is doing a great job. This speech teacher was doing a wonderful job of connecting the kids to specialized services, and that's an example of how they are connected to sped through a virtual environment. But we have to almost rethink how we thought. I know that sounds weird, but we have to almost retrain and rethink how we're thinking where kids are and how they're connected to learning. So it's a big jump. Been doing it a long time. I can see where that level of newness comes in, and it's almost something that I think we're going to be faced with for a while.
When a school is closed, what are the attendance expectations for the students?
So one of them, one of the expectations is, right now, for schools to look at who has been disengaged, because we have those students in schools possibly, we're doing those students that are at COA, and to make sure that we can get those kids engaged right away. So for a student to be engaged, we need them to have access to virtual instruction, and we need to have them connected. Some schools have still done a great job of providing instruction for students that are out for a couple of days, just like they're sick. They provide them a packet saying, or here's your assignments before you get, we're sick. Those are basically for students in elementary that were gone for one or two days. But for them to be successful, our teachers need to move and adjust to the virtual, go right back to Google Classroom teaching, be ready for that if their school is, we're going to be seeing the data, we're going to be looking at it, it's not going to be a surprise if we all of a sudden get there. So we'll do as much preloading as we can to get a staff ready and informed, keeping communication open with that school leader, as well as the teachers, that there may be in this next week, or if cases come up, that they're ready to go within 48 hours. So the preparedness is going to be important for the district, computer devices, as well as making sure that we hit that site and triage that site or sites when it's needed to go. We want to keep kids connected. I think Katie Mo is here, she's our COA Elementary Connect Leader, and she can tell you too, it's hard in virtual to keep kids engaged. Probably one of the biggest things is when kids are disengaged during learning. So we're really going to have to work with our parents again, or those caretakers, because there's not going to always be a parent. How to engage kids, how to keep that grit and that staying power so that they can get through those lessons and that our teachers can teach. During a closure, though, everybody will be virtual, so that's going to be a little different. So everybody will be engaged in the virtual learning. Our kids know how to do it. Just like, I think, if we set the challenge forth, they rise to the occasion. A lot of people thought our little kids couldn't wear masks when they came back to school on September 14th. Every single one did a great job. I think as adults, sometimes we put limitations on people that don't exist. So we just got to make sure that our kids are connected. Our administrators and other personnel are connecting kids, making those phone calls when we don't think they're connected, and then be able to assist. And again, if we're triaging one or two schools, or maybe it's a large high school, we can direct more resources towards doing that, and that engagement will be higher. And we just need kids to be engaged. I think that's the number-one thing. Have access and be engaged.
Mrs. Moss, was your question on taking attendance? Well, it was more along the lines of, I want to make sure that the schools and the district make it clear to parents and to students that when a school closes, it's not a vacation. You are still expected to transition to virtual-
We would still take attendance.
-and be taking all your classes and all that, because that is what it's for, to put kind of a reset into the school, to let, work through the positivity issues and the cases through that school and hopefully come back with-
Loud and clear, absolutely correct. And you've got to remember, a lot of times they're going to be in the middle of assignments. It may not be at the start of an instructional unit, so a lot of that's going to be continuation of learning. So, you know, for them to get credit for that period of work that's being done and being able to still collect grades, and that shorter period of time does help us not lose assessment pieces for kids, because progress monitoring is really hard to do virtually. So that duration of time also helps us to keep track of how kids are progressing as well.
And I think the system is still, as usual, right, where if it's virtual and they don't show up, they're going to get a call home, your kid was not in attendance that day, and they'll find out within 12 hours that-
Correct.
-that's an issue.
And at elementary, we take the attendance in the morning and then in the afternoon as well.
And then I guess my last question is, when I go ahead and sort the list of all of our schools by the number of staff and students within that school, typically our high schools, of course, bubble to the top with the highest number of students, and we're looking at those with 1%. But then as we move down through the junior highs, and if we look at ACP Erie, it has, which is a high school, we're looking at a school that is comparable to, say, Ochsere Elementary.
Yes.
Yet, the number of students there at the high school level, we're looking at a 1% versus an elementary school that is with about the same number of students at a 2%. Granted, I know that the elementaries do a bit more cohorting with the classroom, and your sixth graders don't intermingle with your kindergarteners typically. But I guess as we, when I start looking at some of the junior highs, some of them are pretty close to some of the elementary school sizes too. And so I guess, do we need to make some special considerations based on the size of the school, or is it because of the behavior of the students mixing into classes like we see in junior highs?
That's exactly it. You know, we can adjust with any suggestions you give us. I want, that's what we're here for. But it is exactly due to that, because elementary cohorts are pretty solid. They're, after school, they're not going many places, there are not sports going on. We don't have, we have virtual running club happening right now, which is a great move. But the junior highs have more activity than sort of the high schools, and they're busy places. And that's the exact reason why there's chances that other cohorting groups are going to be taking place during theirs, why the percentage is there for them. But we can always look at a smaller school based on its impact, like in ACP, which definitely has less students than, say, a Hamilton or than some of our bigger junior highs.
And look more from a junior high perspective of the number than high schools.
And I guess, though, I do have, I guess the only concern when you start talking about the extracurricular activities and things is that is our Elite Performance Academy. And the fact that many of those students, or virtually all of those students, are attending some type of a gym or other facility that we hope is being co-horted at that time. So I don't know if we need to continue to just monitor some of the data for that particular school, but I think we have some-
Correct.
-some areas that we might want to continue to look at because of the issues of the mixing.
Great suggestion, and we will. And also, our gyms also, they want to stay open, and so they're doing some really good cohorting strategies because they know they're athletes that are coming to them like family, you know, as well as it's their business. So we could check into that a little bit more, and I'll talk to Mr. Hickey as well, reaching out to those gym studios. And some of them are one-on-one versus the larger group, but we can do that, yes.
Mr. Evans, oh, Mrs. McGee.
I just have one quick question. At the end of the second quarter, will parents be able to move their students in or out of the Chandler Online Academy?
So we are currently in the process of sending home a form for our Chandler Online Academy students to fill out if they'd like to return to in-person. And so we are going to ask them specifically if they want to return or if they're happy to stay in Chandler Online Academy. For students that want to opt into Chandler Online Academy at the semester, they would go through the normal enrollment process and open enrollment process to do that. Yep.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you. Okay, so again, not the presentation I was expecting, but I guess what I've heard and I'm very convinced of is Chandler schools are the safest place for our kids to be right now, based on the situation, the circumstances we're in. But I'm feeling a little bit of a disconnect, because I talked to a lot of teachers and administrators who just are just overwhelmed. And, but you know what? They're great educators, they're great teachers. They're great educators, they're great teachers. I'm smiling, because I know the quality of the people. And I've, back when we were completely virtual, I sat in on classes, and I saw how the teacher would create groups with Google Meets or Teams or whatever, and have the students do work together, so that they were getting through pieces of the lesson, and then they'd all come back together, and they'd have to present. It was fabulous, right? Yeah, it wasn't face-to-face, but for what it was, for what we had to do right then, it was great. Fortunately, I didn't get called on. But I guess I'm feeling a little bit of a disconnect, because whenever we go out, we talk, we, people are, people are like, how do you guys do it? 24 to 1, you know, students to teacher, how do you do that? And people are, as great as our teachers are, a lot of them are overwhelmed right now, and I'm feeling like the numbers aren't adding up correctly, because I hear about teachers who are teaching this section, this section, this section, because they're short, we're shorthanded, and they have maybe, you know, more than 24 kids in a class, but then they have other classes over here where they have more than 24 kids in a class. So I'm not asking for you to answer it now, but I think it's important we understand where, and Lana's going to be mad at me, but where we need to beef up the resources. Do we need more staff in this circumstance, even though we don't have money for them? What do we need to do to take some of the pressure off these teachers and create the quality and back to the continuity consistency? What do we have to do? Because it seems like something's missing.
Well, I'll first take a shot at some of what you've shared, and I think any, I think the majority of the teachers you're going to talk to are overwhelmed, administrators alike, just because the sheer situation we're in, let alone whether, whatever you're teaching. At the secondary, I can speak for, we still have teachers teaching maybe one or two preps, depending on what subjects they're covering. We've known since the beginning that distancing at the secondary was going to be difficult, depending on, you know, students at the online. I think our HR has done a phenomenal job with, we've had to move teachers from in-person to online, from online to in-person, see who might want to split between in-person and online, and add a bunch of staff that we didn't plan on hiring this year. We've done that since the beginning of the year. So we're constantly, I'm constantly talking with principals, where are we at? What's going on? How can we help? What resources can we put in? But we also know that, you know, this is a time, it's also difficult, that there may or may not be teachers out there. But we are looking at what the need is, and trying to address those. Is it perfect? It's not. Is it overwhelming? Yes, it is. And so, we've been constantly trying to make sure that we're having conversations to do what we can for our teachers, and let them know. We might be missing the mark on some of those. This is new for all of us, and the goal is, how can we keep everybody safe? Everybody's not going to agree, but we are putting forth, how can we do that?
Mr. Evans, I just want to share a little bit. Now, I'll ask if Mr. Rother can hand those to you. Just in transparency, I want to give you an updated elementary numbers right now, just because your question kind of asked about it. So in kindergarten, we have 105 sections right now. 70% of those sections are at 18 or less. This is as of October 26th. 96% of the sections have 22 students or less in them. And what we co-horted this with is, if things are moved totally out, we can get as much social distancing there. And you can see 5% have a hard time with the social distancing to the maximum. But we still have that tire inflated, like I told you before, there's some cohorting going on there with that. So our first grade at 110 sections, 55% are less than 18 per classroom. With an additional 43% in 1922, bringing it to 98% of our classrooms under the 22 to 1. In our second grade, a little harder there, because we have 85% that are under 22%, but 56% are less than 18. And when I mean less than 18, that was a cap. A lot of those classrooms are 16 and below. In third grade, we have 116 classrooms, and 90% of those classrooms have 22 or lower, with 48%, almost 50% being 18 or less. With our fourth grade, 89% are 22 or less, with 39% being a little lower than 18. We do see an 11% of those classrooms have higher than 23%. So that 13 classrooms out of the 116 are doing different strategies, mitigations, maybe there's Plexiglas that's going in, or that they're social distance four feet, or five feet, but maybe not the six feet. But everything else is mitigated. Same cohorts, same masks, all of that. Fifth grade, 92% is below 22 to 1, with 29% being less than 18. And in sixth grade, 42% of the classrooms have less than 18. 42% of 125 classrooms have less than 18 students. 22 students or less, 40% for a total of 82%. Yes, that 18% that's a little higher, which equates to 23 classrooms, has to alter some mitigation strategies there. But again, the biggest thing that we're seeing there, we have another 117 sections of specialized instruction, self-contained, those are still 100% below 11 students, mostly at three to four across those 117 sections. So the biggest thing that we're seeing with frustration, teachers got to protect this whole thing to be able to be close to students. And in the elementary schools, you have students around you, you're doing small group, you're doing guided instruction, you're over students, you're with them in different parts of classrooms. That's been really hard to develop other strategies for teachers to be able to implement the same pieces. So I think, in the future here, they are learning how to do small group instruction by individualizing it, and putting them in separate parts of the room by having a classroom chart. But that's been a big struggle for our teachers, because they're not doing things the way they used to. And we're not moving student cohorts, we're not moving, we're moving teachers to different rooms. If, say, a sixth grade departmentalized, the teacher's actually moving right now, until we start to see the numbers go the opposite way. So we really are looking at mitigation strategies. In some regards, they'd like to lessen those, but we're not going to lessen them until their numbers start to come down in the right direction. I just gave the chart to you, because I know, I wanted to update you since the last time we covered this, which was before September 14th.
So Mr. Narducci, I wanted to make a comment on this. So really, what we're not, what is so incredibly stressful for our staff is, number one, not only can they not go back to normal in their classroom for normal teaching when they go back to in-person, they have to adopt whole new strategies, and they're having whole new classroom management skills that they need to develop, that deal with masks and handwashing, and the way they do lines, and so everything really has upended their world for our teachers.
Yes, and still, we still have to get the intervention pieces put in, we still have to do our progress monitoring. And so they're doing it, but it's, if they tell you they're tired, they are. A lot of people are tired. You ask our nurses and our doctors, they're tired, too. I think our communities are tired. You know, so I wouldn't take that as, I think our teachers are tired. They're working darn hard, and they're finding strategies, and they're getting it done. And I have to, I think we all have to applaud them. We talk about that all the time. I don't know if everybody's going to feel appreciated, but they're doing a good job, and they're doing the best they can.
And on top of that, Mrs. Mossen, as you well know, they're worried about catching COVID, or their family members. I mean, there's a whole nother layer. So the stress level is real, and I would say it's for every educator across the state and across the nation. The stress is real.
And also going back to just the overall, that schools are really a safer place for the students. I've been looking at various studies over the last month or so, that have been coming out all over the United States, where they've been looking in various states as to the transmission rates in the schools. And they're finding that they are, they are not, it is not spreading in the schools like it is spreading in the community. And I truly believe that, you know, if, hate to get on a philosophical thing here, but if everybody was doing what the schools are doing, we wouldn't be seeing as much transmission in the community as we do. And so I think that overall, in many places throughout the country, they've kind of come to the conclusion that the schools are not the problem with spreading, that they thought they might be. A lot of people were worried about it, but the conclusions have come in that have said, it's not the schools that are the problem. They are documenting that it is not, it does not have those significant spreading events like you see at parties, and gatherings, and weddings, and all of these other things, where people are not social distancing and not wearing masks. So I applaud all of our teachers, all of our principals, all of our administrators, and all of our support staff for all of the work that they are doing to help keep everybody in our, on our campuses, and at all of our sites, safe. I think truly the key is continuing the mitigation strategies with fidelity, and staying on it, even though we are all tired. It's tough to keep this up all the time. I know there's been times where I personally have said, I've had enough of this, but we know that to stay safe, we need to be doing these things. And I truly appreciate everyone who has worked so hard to make sure that we are doing the right things to keep everyone safe. Ms. Love, do you have any other questions?
I just want to be respectful of time, because I know that we have another presentation before the business meeting, so I think I can save them.
Okay. Mrs. Brunner?
I have a few more questions.
Is your microphone on?
Few more questions. So the sub situation, what is that looking like? Are we tracking how many teachers, maybe, this is from Ms. Nance, I'm not sure, are having to cover for other teachers, and then thus being exposed to another whole group of students?
So currently, we have site subs that are dedicated to each campus. If they're unable to be filled, we've been shifting those site-designated subs to other sites who may be in need. We really have only had one day so far that was kind of a larger impact of people out, but there were several activities going around, around the valley, so we think that may have had an impact that day as well, as it was a Friday, but we were able to get coverage in. Sometimes we send out, you know, one of our academic coaches down here, Ms. Phillips, went out and covered a class for us as well when needed. So we're trying to limit the number of times teachers are on preps, having to cover. At the elementary, we've avoided splitting classes, which is typically what they do, because they don't have consistent prep time. At the secondary level, the teachers right now have been ones who have volunteered to go in and do that, on a rotating basis. So we are continually looking at that. We're looking with, we're working with ESI right now. We just loaded on another 15 to 20 subs this past week to send them out to the sites. But overall, we just did some statistics for Dr. Castile, and we had over 2,600 substitutes used last year during the same time period. We were just under 300 this current year. And so, you know, our cost savings there has been wonderful, but I think our collaboration among our sites and our substitute services here in Human Resources has been really strong. I mean, every morning we're on, and people are shifting support to where it's needed to help work with our staff who are in need.
So would you say that it is significantly less than in other years, where teachers are having to cover?
Yes.
I don't need exact numbers, it's okay, I just wanted to know.
And we will be hiring more permanent subs at the semester, like we typically do with our student teachers.
Could I also find out what percentage of the quarantined students/families have provided evidence of testing? So we saw that there was nine cases where they were positive, but what, nine out of how many actually provided us information, whether they were negative or positive?
So I'm not sure, maybe Mrs. Hartley has additional numbers for how many students would have gotten tested and provided us their negative tests. But we've only had the nine that have provided the positive test. We really, it's hard to tell how many of those students that we've quarantined could have tested positive, or excuse me, could have tested negative and didn't tell us. And again, we don't know if they could have been showing some symptoms and didn't get a test. We just have the numbers that we have, and we only know of those nine that have tested positive for those that are quarantined.
Lindsay, do you have?
I'll just say that, you know, a negative test doesn't break a quarantine, so they're out 14 days regardless. So a lot of the times, even if parents are getting their kids tested, you know, just out of wanting to be safe and know, they don't always provide that to us, because it's not required upon return. What we would need is a positive test, because sometimes that changes their dates that they would be able to come back.
But if the person thinks, I'm going to be quarantined 14 days anyway, they may not tell you about the positive test, right?
It's very true.
And so...
Can I just, actually, if a student tests positive, the county would notify us. It may not be within the 14 days, but the county does notify us if a student tests positive. So we would eventually be able to identify that student, and know that they tested positive.
Yeah, we would eventually find out. Yeah, it's a mandatory report, so that would come through there, but it's not, it doesn't necessarily come from the parents.
And we don't know how many have tested and how many haven't, right? That's not something we ask or anything of our quarantine kids. So I don't know, I think, was there, were there more questions before we?
I think those are probably, if no one else has additional questions, I want to, again, thank you very much for presenting the plan. Dr. Castile?
I know you're going to go to the next presentation, if you ladies want to go up. Can I review what I took notes at as follow-up and suggestions from the board?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
You want us to explore expanding virtual options for some of our students, our parents who feel the need to self-quarantine? Like information on the average age of our staff, and we can get that to you, we just need to push a button or two and support Human Resources. Work better to get Garner teacher input and their thoughts on some of these plans, and we have worked, as one of the gentlemen said, with our leadership, our association leadership, and have asked her to help us engage more teachers. Check on the quarantining in other districts, that we're not quarantining teachers who are exposed, and like to do some work in that area. We look at the age of the school, I'm sorry, the percentage that we would put a school in closure temporarily, based on the size of school, you used ACP, so we'll have a conversation about that. The staffing, the class sizes, there more we can do to help take some of the pressure off. So if there's anything else, please email me. We will be meeting on these suggestions, and I know Donna will have more than I, so, but thank you.
I guess, we can get a chance to do comments, so will we have comments later on that? Because we just did questions, so I don't know. Usually, we do questions first, then...
And comments?
You want to do it at the...
We could do it at the end?
Okay, sure, whenever.
I guess I just have one additional question, is when would this, when do we start implementing this?
We would start, our plan would be to start immediately, we're watching those numbers very closely.
Okay.
And while we want to communicate with the community, and I believe we have 700 or 800 that have been watching this presentation. We'll get something out to them by Friday, the entire community.
Thank you. Next, we have a study session on integrated units, and I believe Dr. Edgar is going to start us off this evening.
Yes. Good evening, I'm going to get closer. Oh, maybe I won't, maybe I'll scoot back, that's kind of loud. So, good evening, Madam President, Dr. Castile, members of the board. I'm here representing a very large team at the Instructional Resource Center, because the integrated units are, it's been a labor of love, so we're going to talk a little bit about how we created integrated units for our elementary students in Chandler Unified School District. And I brought members of my team in the Instructional Resource Center with me. I have Ms. Jenna Phillips, who is our elementary science instructional coach, also assisted in substituting, as Dr. Nance had shared. We do a little bit of everything to support. And then I also have Assistant Director Katie Mo, she's our Assistant Director of Chandler Online Academy, Elementary Connect, but previously... So, I want to make sure she came back and was able to speak to, uh, the process that we, we went through to make sure that we had integrated units, uh, up and rolling. So, I'm excited to have them here tonight, and hopefully we'll get through this process. We have, uh, changed it just slightly to, uh, because of time, and then we will have questions at the end, too, so. Oh, well, that is, no, there we go. So, first we want to talk about why integration at the elementary sites. So, in 2018, 2019, our ADE adopted new science and social science standards. And what was a little bit different between the previous social science and science standards was that, if you look at the visual on the left-hand side, previously, we were really focusing instructionally on the remembering, the understanding piece, really it was recall. And so, we wanted to provide a more comprehensive piece, uh, for our students because the standards changed just enough to where we focused on the science component of phenomenon, the storyline for, uh, social science. So, we looked at different aligned frameworks and resources because we really wanted to design something for CUSD with instructional intentionality, to make sure that we created our own piece, because the resources out there that we attempted to bring in and really see if they aligned to aid the standards and what we were trying to do here in Chandler Unified School District for our elementary students, didn't really fit what we wanted to do and the instructional model we wanted to provide for our students. We wanted to look at windows, we want to provide windows and mirrors, looking for the diversity, the opportunity for connection. We wanted to look at access, making sure that there's access to materials for all of our different sites, uh, in the elementary schools. A variety of assessments and knowledge, uh, application components, so moving from that remembering and understanding piece to evaluation and creation, so that there's more meaningful instructional, uh, pieces for our science and social science in the elementary setting. So, the two frameworks that were decided upon were the three-dimensional science and the C3 social science, which very much align with what AD provide, ADE provided us. So, we looked at this, and we said, you know what, we need to, we really wanted to focus on the inquiry-based piece. We want to have discourse amongst our students, make sure that they're doing more of the talking than the teachers, so that there's quality, uh, quality understanding amongst our students. Focusing on the college career and civic life focus, speaking to the acquisition and application of the ideas as they relate to the learner based upon the standard that has been provided, and promoting understanding in that bigger picture. So, really, if we want to focus on something tonight, it would be the engagement factor of what integrated units, uh, provide for our students. So, the 5E model of instruction is something that we, in fourth quarter as well as first quarter when we were in virtually, we really focused on the 5E model of instruction for all of our lessons in Chandler Unified School District in elementary. So, focusing on how we first explain, elaborate, engage, explore, and evaluate, so hitting all those components that really go into the critical thinking pieces and allows for differentiation. So, for those students that need to be, uh, pulled in and have a little more of that elaboration, or if we can evaluate at a greater level and have different discourse with our, our students that really want to expand and evaluate and, and move forward. So, anytime we try to plan something at the Instructional Resource Center, we take into account all the different stakeholders, but most importantly, our students, what they're receiving, but the teachers as well. It's easy, sometimes for us, when you are removed from that classroom, to say, we would like this to happen, and this to happen, and this to happen, for teachers to really carry out these quality instructional practices. We wanted to align some of these pieces. So, there are efficiencies built in to the integrated units that we're, we will present to you tonight. So, standards-focused, first and foremost, we are standards-focused, taking in the science and social science components, integrating when we certainly could because it was a natural piece, so making sure that we have those meaningful connections. Alignment to high-yield instructional strategies, so we have certain high-yield instructional strategies, evaluation and reflection, uh, the cognitive task analysis that happens through the conversations that the teachers have been trained in. ELP standards, ELP stands for English Language Proficiency, so also with some new state models, we have the opportunity to do, uh, to teach our English language learners in this setting as well, using these particular integrated unit maps. So, that's been something that's exciting with the efficiencies, not only is it science and social science, we have the English Language Proficiency component as well. And something I threw, I throw in there because, uh, as a former administrator for many years, the certified evaluation alignment, we were also able to take these, the different instructional strategies because the focus is really not dependent upon a resource, it's the instructional strategy that the teacher is utilizing to deliver the instruction. So, we created a look-for document, um, that aligns to our, uh, evaluation, so it was very easy for administrators as well to look at these integrated units, to observe and align them to the evaluation piece. Something I forgot to say was that we are in year two of our science and social science. We have had an integrated Unit 1.0 training last year, it was very successful, and we've had an integrated Unit 2.0 training this year for our teachers. And we also had a mini, um, PD for our administrators, our principals as well. So, we were trying to make sure that we hit all the different pieces so that there was a general understanding of the reason why we went to integrated units, and so that there was some excitement as well. So, the working product, we have a visual here, and I'm going to let, uh, Ms. Phillips and Ms. Mo continue speaking a little bit more, uh, about this piece, but I do just want to share that the, these foundational components were created by many different people. This map was created by EdTech, was able to help us put this in a nice, uh, a nice layout, and the, um, coaches will share with you what that layout looks like a little bit, a little bit later. But, we're just very excited that we're able to do this and also be able to do this, not just in person, but also we are able to purchase resources, multiple resources, not necessarily a textbook, but they are all virtual. So, if we really think about, because nobody knew, uh, at the time when we were going through this, that COVID-19 would happen and we'd be using Google Classroom, and we'd have Google Meets. Um, so, a lot of the resources that we purchased for integrated units already had capabilities to be inputted into Google Classroom, as well as some of those pieces that were all virtual. So, we couldn't have planned it any better, uh, for our staff, and we actually saw, when we went to virtual, a lot of our staff utilized integrated units even more so than they did before, because we did do a slow rollout with it being a two-year implementation process. So, with this working product as a visual, I'm going to let Jenna Phillips and Ms. Katie Mo come up here and share.
Thank you, Jessica. When we're looking at this beautiful display, um, there's a couple different things that I want you to take note of. First is the three colors represented, and this is a primary teacher lesson built in itself. We've got blue. Blue stands for Social Science Standalone Lessons. We've got yellow, those are science standalone lessons, and you guessed it, blue and yellow make green. The integrated units are green. So, with that, we, we are able to, with a quick visual, look and see for the scope of the year, a grade level would have a few different units, some of them are standalone, some of them are integrated. And the reason that we did that was because we did not want to force an integration where it did not fit. And we're going to talk to us a little bit about how we created those connections between the content areas, but I did want to focus on the idea that we didn't want to force anything, we wanted it to be an organic, real-world connection between the two content areas. Our focus is on science and social science, but we also integrate other content areas in as well. Um, on the bottom portion of this, we've got weeks, so we have an estimated number of weeks that each of these units would take, and we're going to take a deep dive into what a teacher has access to so that you can all see. But the other piece in here is that when we look at, um, what is actually on the roadmap and on those pieces, we've got two main components, and that is the cross-cutting concept, that's what we are calling our content connector. That is, um, there, there are seven cross-cutting concepts that are represented in the world of science, they are big thematic pieces that connect our worlds together. And when we read them and understood that we're looking at patterns and cause and effect and systems and system models, we could really see a very strong connection between science and social science. And so, that is the bridge that kind of, um, helped tie everything together. And then we also focus on big ideas and essential questions. Every single unit has an essential question that ties in the cross-cutting concept, and at the end of every single unit, the student should be, be able to answer those essential questions based on the lessons and the learning that they've conducted. So, I'm going to escape out of here, and we'll pull this up. I'm going to show you quickly. On, um, our CUSD website, under curriculum, under science or social studies, social science curriculum, you can find access to these. You would go in under department's curriculum, or under academics curriculum to get there, and you'll scroll down and these beautiful roadmaps are there. You can select the roadmap that you'd like, and it will take you to, um, a page that has this layout. And then from there, you can select whatever unit you would like to explore, you can click right on it. I will say that in order to get this far, everyone can see all of our beautiful work, but to get deep down into our resources, our lessons, all of the, the pieces that we put our human capital into, it's password-protected. So, um, let's see, we'll go into maps and geography here, and once we go here, we are able to do a deep dive. Now, this is the unit of study in its entirety, it's very small, um, up on the screen, but when you really dive in, you can see all of the different pieces. So, we start up at the top with the amount of weeks, the essential question, and then as multiple teams, as Dr. Edgar has said, we had an accordion model of teachers coming in, so we had flex teachers in and out, um, throughout the two-year process, and we're continuing to meet with groups, um, virtually in terms of feedback in different pieces. Um, but we've broken down the standards, figured out what questions do we need to have these kids answer in order to be successful in answering the essential question? We've looked at all the concepts, vocabulary, and a big piece of this is the disciplinary skills and processes in social science, and the, um, science and engineering practices in science, and those two areas are the, those skills that we really want kids to build, and we broke those into the standards. As you can see here, we have the ELD, ELP standards that Dr. Edgar referenced. Part of this is, um, we've listed the standards, and then there is a supporting document that is being created that teachers can go to and have a really nice matrix that's going to show what, um, units all, and lessons all of these standards are covered in, and what standards they align to. We have our student-friendly objectives for teachers so that they'll know exactly what is going to be covered within that lesson. We have our content vocabulary and our academic vocabulary laid out because we know the importance of both of those. And then down here, we have our, um, adopted resources, and we also have tied in our journeys because that's a big, um, portion of our elementary curriculum, and how we can tie that into the English Language Arts, as well as the, the materials that we have purchased, um, for science and social science if we had them. And then, again, open ed resources. And then down here is where we're going to be able to tap into our lesson, and within that lesson, I'm going to click on it in just one moment, it's going to take you into the step-by-step of how we can make science and social science come to life in our classrooms. We've also provided, um, all of the formative assessment grading opportunities that are happening within each of those lessons, as well as the summative assessment, and we use another one of our amazing resources, Define STEM, which is a performance, um, performance-type assessment, which we know is best practice in science and social science. So, students are actually able to make their learning come to life in some sort of a design thinking or project-based learning experience. So, I'm going to actually click on one of these for us, and that is going to be Lesson Three, Floating Down the River. I'm going to open that up. And then this is, um, one of our lessons, and Jenna, do you want to go through the...
Sure. Awesome. Here. So, the formatting is set up the same way for all the grade levels and all the units, um, so they're pretty easy to follow, and everything that a teacher would need is right there. Um, it starts with the, uh, lesson objective, and then the list of the standards that would be covered by this lesson. You'll notice here that, um, these two standards are, are science standards, um, and these four down here are our social science standards. This was a, an example of, of, a really easy way to marry both, um, Earth Science standards and geography standards for social science. And so, within this one lesson, we're hitting, um, we're teaching two subject areas within one, one lesson. We provide, uh, materials for teachers, if they're online, there's a link there for them to access, um, time suggestions that we've provided, um, the vocabulary that they'll find as they move through the lesson, along with suggested resources if they need additional, or they're looking for something during reading time, um, they can pull out some of the additional resources as well. Then just as Dr. Edgar had mentioned, um, we've set up our lesson plans in the 5E model, and 5E isn't something that has been new, but it is something that, um, is a nice way for teachers to structure the lesson so that we keep kids engaged in, in science and social science when they're learning. We are going to model for you, um, we're going to have you do it, but we're kind of short on time. Um, we're going to model for you one of them that we had, um, for students to do, just so you can see what, um, what the, the flow is for this lesson. Now, obviously, we're going to kind of compact it, but we're going to show you, uh, the engagement, the exploration, and a piece of the explanation piece tonight. So, let me... So, this is one of our resources, Mystery Science, it does have a Google Classroom piece, so, um, if students are learning at home, teachers can assign it into Google Classroom. That is the one thing that we found with a lot of our resources, um, whoever was putting them together, stepped up to the plate right at the beginning of the year and provided us some, uh, resources that we could use right away. So, students, as they're starting a lesson, um, an engagement part is something that we want students to get excited about, or think about something in the natural world. And so, um, we may not show this part to students, but, um, we're going to start with just a little video clip, um, to get you thinking, and remember, you are second graders right now.
Hi, it's Doug. When I was a kid about your age, there was this forest near where I lived. I loved to go exploring in the forest. I'd spend hours out there, and I'd always find interesting things. Like, one time, I saw a baby owl up in a tree. Sometimes I would see deer out there. There was always something new to find. One animal I really hoped I would find was a frog. I love frogs, even to this day, they're one of my favorite animals. My dad knew this about me, and so, one day in the spring, my dad said to me, "You know, Doug, it's springtime. Did you know there's a place in the forest where we can find some tadpoles? Baby frogs, like these." My dad said, "Yeah, you could catch a few, raise them here at home in a fish tank, and then release them back into the forest when they grow into frogs." I was so excited. Could we really do that? Where would we find them? So, my dad took me on a hike back into the forest, but this time to a part of the forest I hadn't explored yet. I could see that up ahead of us was this water. Maybe it was a pond? Maybe it was a lake? I couldn't tell. As we got closer, my dad helped me carefully get close to the edge of the water and dip a little plastic bottle in to try to catch some of the tadpoles in it. But I accidentally dropped the bottle in the water. "Oh, no." "Well, that's okay," I said, "I think I can get it back out of the water again using a stick." But as I went to do that, that's when I realized, the plastic bottle was moving! In just a few seconds, it had floated a few feet down from me. I had to run after it. Finally, I caught it, but that's when I had noticed for the first time, the bottle had moved because the water in this place was moving. I hadn't even noticed that before. I said to my dad, "Dad, why is the water doing that? It's moving." Now, I already knew that in some places, the water moves, like I'd seen waves at the ocean before. Waves are water that rise up, go down, and crash against the shore. But this movement wasn't like waves. Instead, this movement was in a line, moving constantly from one place to another place further down. It wasn't crashing against the shore, it was going from here, down this way, it was flowing. My dad smiled and said, "Doug, that's a river. That's what a river does. A river flows." In fact, people love to float down rivers. Sometimes in the summer, when it's nice and warm, people will put inflatable tubes in and sit on them, and then just float down the river, just for fun. I thought about this some and said, "Wow, so does that mean, if you put a boat in there, you wouldn't even have to paddle?" My dad explained, "That's right, you wouldn't have to, as long as you're okay going the same direction that the river flows. The river will just carry you like a train. That's what rivers do." But why? What makes the water move like this? What causes a river to flow?
So, during the time that students spend watching, there are breaks where teachers can allow students to, um, discuss with one another, and we've come up with lots of different ways that this can happen, especially, um, right now. But, um, this highlights one of the important pieces of the new science standards, and that is from, um, looking at phenomena. So, I might show this in a classroom and say to students, "Wow, that river is flowing really fast," and have them make some observations about it, um, but finally get to the question of, "Why? Why is that river flowing?" Because as we go through as, um, and look at things that happen in nature... Because as we go through and look at things that happen in nature, we're making those observations that prompt questions. And that's really what we want to have students doing, rather than us as teachers telling them why something happens like that. So we might spend a few minutes having students discuss, "Why does it run?" Maybe they hadn't really thought of that before. It seems like a simple question, but it might stump them. And so giving them some time with this phenomenon. Why do you think, David? And second graders might. And it's a great way for teachers to do some formative assessment right there on the spot and figure out where exactly their kid's understanding is. We know that there's lots of misconceptions that students come to a classroom with in science. And so that discourse that we're having students do tells the teacher a lot about where they are at in their learning. So after they have that discussion, part of the Mystery Science episode has them look at a map and talk about, "Well, here are some rivers across North America." And the arrows show what direction they move and have the students come up with some ideas about what do they all have in common, which they all end up out here at a water source, at an ocean, at a gulf. You can add in some of that vocabulary as you're teaching that. But it still doesn't answer the question, "Why?" So that's when we have the students decide they're going to build a model. So the great thing about this activity is it uses materials that are easy to find in a classroom because prep in science takes a lot of time. And so this really just uses regular copy paper and a printout if you want it. The Mystery Science walks the kids through it step by step, and they do it in a way where if you were working with a partner, each partner has a job, and then they have a discussion that they do along with it. So as you walk through, you put a piece of paper over your fist. We talk about how this kind of looks like land a little bit if we're looking from above, has a high point, some low points, might show students some pictures. What are some things that you notice about these mountains? Are they similar or different to your mountains? And then this is kind of the fun part for the kids. They take a blue marker. Sorry, they attach it to their paper first. Then they use a blue marker. And in a minute, we're going to have it rain on our mountain. And so we want to kind of highlight, where will the rain hit on our mountain? And it's going to be those top peaks in our mountain as it's coming down the side. Katie's doing a very nice job. If you're working with a partner, one partner would get to do it, and then the other partner would get to do it as well. This is a great outside activity, especially when you're working with water.
Quality marker.
And then again, you would have a conversation with students. How do our mountains look similar? How are they different? What do we notice about the blue markings on all of our different mountains? And then the teacher would move around and spray, or students could have, we have enough for students in groups to have water bottles. Right now, it would be preferable that teachers did it. And they would spray the top of the mountain. Well, as long as you're using washable markers, that runs like a river. And so it starts to, are you going to spray it?
Well, we actually have baggies for if you'd like to take it home and do it yourself.
Can you go back to the previous slide? No, one more. So that's why it looks like it's running uphill. It's not. It's a mountain through Canada. It looks like it's running in the wrong way, but it's because of the visual, I can see it's a mountain.
So after students go through and they do the, they build the model and they spray it and the water runs like a river, then we talk about how is the water running with relationship to the mountain? And so you want to lead them to the answer that there must be mountains here. And at the end of this mystery, they actually put in both the Rocky Mountains and the Appalachians so that students can see that the starting points of these rivers all happen in mountains and they flow down towards the ocean or Gulf of Mexico. I'm glad you made the connection.
Finally. And like, there's no bad artist in the class. There's really no, you know?
Absolutely not. And so then following this, one of the strategies that we used in our 301 classes last year and then subsequently wrote into these units was an idea of chat stations. So it gets kids up, moving around the room, talking about what they did with other students, adding sticky notes to posters. There's other ways that we can do it in the digital world using Padlet. But we want students to think deeply about what they just did, not recalling some fact that they might have learned about a river or a mountain.
Can I add something to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I also wanted to say that we've written in these high-yield instructional strategies into the lessons as a way to help support teachers with using those high-quality teaching opportunities. So we pulled these from some, actually, we used these from some of our 301 classes that we had taught on highly effective strategies for teachers. It's just yet another way to layer in some new teaching opportunities for teachers.
Right, sneaking PD in there without them knowing. So then at the end, we would wrap up the entire lesson with having students do something with, "Why do you think the river flows?" And now they should have built up enough information, they built it up, I didn't give it to them, about how the river flows. And so that would kind of wrap up this maybe three or four days-long lesson. But at the end, they can answer their own question. I don't have to do it for them.
When we built these, we used the term "living documents." So these are living units because they are teacher-created by teachers here within CUSD. We've put a lot of time in this, but on paper, it might look one way. And in reality, when we implement, it might look a completely different way. So we've relied on our teachers to implement these lessons and then provide us feedback. So we've added this whole feedback feature for teachers, and we've gotten feedback, utilized their changes, implemented them into the units, and then we'll continue the cycle ongoing. So sometimes teachers will say, "Hey, I found an additional amazing resource," or "I created this graphic organizer that would be perfect for this." And so we're using the term "living" because nothing in here is set in stone right now. We want to always adapt and change based on what we know is best practice and what we know works best for kids in the classroom. So we just have had a whole bunch of different pieces of feedback, and we're continuously asking teachers, "Please submit your feedback. We know it's an extra layer, an extra thing for them to do." But it really does inform our instruction of how we're going to roll these units out.
And when we started virtually, we started to get feedback from teachers that would say, "This works well virtually, this doesn't. This is how I adapted it." So it was kind of neat to see that they were still providing us information so that we could support them. So this is one of our sessions we had with teachers. We went through having writers. And then last year, before everything went south, we brought in reviewers. So reviewers were teachers that had used it, that had feedback that they could provide, that went through all of our feedback and then made those tweaks to the existing documents. I pulled this email from one of our teachers. I just thought it was, it made us realize that what we're doing is working and that teachers appreciate it. It's just a teacher that's towards the end of her career, and she doesn't usually step up to do things like this, but she wanted to be part of it because she knows it's good for kids.
And like I said, we do have baggies for you to take home if you wish, because I knew that you would really enjoy this, Mr. Evans. I knew that everybody would enjoy this because really, when we're talking about numbers and the COVID data, we're talking about students and how they access instruction and how do we do that. So I wanted to add a few pictures here. And this was obviously, the picture you saw a moment ago was actually last year's professional development because, as you see, we were not social distanced. So I want to make sure that that is out there, that that was a previous picture, as well as this right now. But as you can see, there's some standalone pieces that students can do. This is a sound unit. And all those different pieces, some of it, the teachers collected as far as the materials, but we are doing the best that we possibly can do. And we have our work cut out for us, making sure that we replenish the materials too because some sites have easier access than others for parents to volunteer and bring certain things. We've spent many a times, Jenna spent many a days at the Goodwill, collecting felt and other different things to make sure that we have the materials for teachers and for students. If a teacher sends us an email, we will certainly find that material, make sure that they get it. And the joy on the students' faces as far as the engagement piece, the discovery that they are making the connections, it's less talking, less direct instruction, more doing and making those connections. So we keep talking about high-yield instructional strategies. So what those are, are the instructional strategies that can be used across education, across the disciplines, to make sure that we have better student outcomes, student achievement. So in the middle here, so I have the two pictures of these cute kids. And then in the middle, we have student work, actually, that was submitted through Elementary Connect Chandler Online Academy. We're doing a secondary piece now as far as secondary look at, how can we also use what we've done in integrated units, transfer that to Chandler Online Academy, Elementary Connect? And so we're doing that and doing it very well. And it doesn't hurt that Ms. Mo happens to be the Assistant Director at Elementary Connect. So it's definitely a passion of hers as well as the district's. But I also just want to share one piece too because it impacts our teachers. As you saw, as Ms. Phillips stated, that the teacher quote that we had up there was somebody who was reinvigorated by being part of this professional development and being able to teach this way and teach maybe a little bit differently instead of the report-out-type piece that Science and Social Science used to be. So that was fantastic, but it also affects our families and our students. And I shared this email with some members of the cabinet because anytime we can get a fantastic email, we just need to share. And I feel compelled to read it to you out loud for those that can't necessarily read it themselves right now. So it says, "Hello, I want to say thank you for allowing and giving [blank] the time and space to share who he is and where he comes from. He has taken this time to reflect and think about the people of Mesa Verde. He couldn't believe people like himself no longer lived in a community or a village like this, like his. He's grateful for what he has learned about his own people from Acoma Pueblo and Gila River Indian Community during this time. In my experience going through school, I've heard teachers say Native American history isn't important or doesn't matter. So I appreciate you teaching Native American indigenous people history to your students because it does matter. For a child like [blank] who wears his hair long because of his Gila River culture, to teach and share who he is gives him value and makes others accepting. Thank you, Ms. [blank], my family and I appreciate you." So it's moments like those that make all the hard work of two years, many different people, many different teachers. That's what makes the difference right there. It makes a difference for our parents. It makes a difference for our students. So we're very pleased that we could share this with you tonight, and we are prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Edgar, and Katie and Jenna. Truly appreciate it. I don't personally have any questions, but just a comment, I think this is fantastic because all of these cross-curricular connections really help, I think, kids' brains work a whole lot better and learn and retain the information that they need to know. Hands-on experience are great things for them to do to get actively involved in something, and these lessons have meaning. So, Mr. Evans, did you want to participate and do a mountain?
Yeah, can I have some of that stuff to go? Real quick, so what I was picturing, and actually, I have one question, but can you get me back to it? The certified evaluation piece. But before I, thank you. But before I go there, this is kind of reminiscent of a program that started down in Vail, Beyond Textbooks, but you kind of did something really interesting with this because the inquiry-based instruction piece is awesome, right? But then there's a pedagogy to it because you're tying in a lot of cultural pieces that then can be shared with all the students, right? And like you said, as it relates to the learning, your slide two is like phenomenal. I'm going to steal this. And then the depth of learning piece, what I didn't understand is how it goes from blue to yellow to green. Like, what's the timeline for that kind of stuff? Because the other piece is the teacher buy-in or the educator buy-in because they have the ability to create and mold this the way they want it to work. But a lot of people who are in elementary, who might not be really strong in the sciences, right? This really gives them a kind of a pathway and a guide to get them to have fun themselves and then share them with their students. So yeah, so what does that pathway look like? Because you said some of them can be a couple of weeks and...
Sure. So I'm going to just address the timeline, and then I'll have Ms. Mo come up and discuss a little bit further about your secondary question. But right now, if you look at the bottom, it says four weeks. So four weeks for this Unit One. It's Civics Communities, and this is a little bit of a blurry graphic. But you can also go without a password-protected piece onto our website. So four weeks, this is all of Quarter One. There's two units within Quarter One. One is four weeks, one is five weeks, and those are estimates. We know that through differentiation, it might take a little bit longer, a little bit less, and there might be some other pieces you need to add in between. So we really let the teachers have their professional judgment to decipher, but really, that's kind of a pacing guide. So as you can see, Quarter One, Two, Three, and Four, and then suggested weeks down here, we did a very short lesson for you, and we compacted it even that much more today. But there is so much more if you actually dive in and look at the resources that you can do. There's multiple standards, so we just hit one piece. So I'm hoping that answers your timeline question. Can you repeat the second question? And then I'll let Ms. Mo come up and answer it. So what we did is I'll actually not have Ms. Mo answer that. I'll answer it if you're okay with that. Certified evaluation alignment, what we wanted to do is, as a principal, I took my experience as a principal and said, "You know, in elementary, and in many, not just elementary, but specifically, the teachers are teaching all these different content areas. And so as a principal, I want to be the best at what I do and make sure that I'm looking at what are the high-yield instructional strategies. And then to have a document that takes the high-yield instructional strategies that aligns it to Marzano's evaluation piece, I'm able to say, okay, it's almost like my study guide a little bit. Because to be a master at every single content to the depth of what our teachers do in the classroom can be a challenge at points in time." So it's just another helpful document for our administrators to look at to align the instruction with the evaluation and to see that we're hitting certain points that are in the evaluation that specifically address high-yield instructional strategy so it sticks and we're making better connections through instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Edgar. At this point in time, since it is time for us to start our business meeting, I'm going to cut off questions. But if one of you would be willing to stay, well, let me first ask, does the board have additional questions that they would like to ask?
Yes.
You do, okay. Ms. Love, do you have any other, do you have any questions that you will like to ask later on this?
I don't have any other questions, but thank you so much for the presentation. It was great.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Could we just have one of you stay so that we can answer Mr. Evans' questions during our information section of the meeting?
Certainly.
I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam President, I just want to say thank you. I had asked Jessica to, "All we do is live and breathe COVID," and I wanted the board to see, there's so much going on behind the scenes, and they're remarkable. And it's a Chandler product, and I'm just so proud of them. I wanted to share it with all of you.
I'm glad you did. And I think that it's a great way to really show what's really working with our students at school. So thank you. We appreciate all your work and all the teachers' work too that have helped you to refine this and, you know, get additional suggestions. Thank you.